I now call to order the regular meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Gilbert, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Biederman.
Present.
Mr. Lane.
Present.
Dr. Mertada.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Ms. Tribble.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
The chair recognizes a quorum. Good evening and welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. I would like to remind our board members tonight that immediately following this regular meeting, we will convene the annual meeting of the board. I want to thank the Spades Park branch team for hosting our meeting tonight. We will hear from the branch manager in just a few moments. But as we follow up on Thanksgiving, I wanted to take a few, just a few moments to express the gratitude that I have for the Indianapolis Public Library and staff and the, my fellow board members. As an institution with 150-year history, we have a lot to be thankful and proud of. I'll start by saying that I'm thankful for our patrons. Whether those patrons are folks who have become like family and who are known by face or by name to our dedicated staff, or whether or not they're our patrons who take advantages of, take advantage of library services online, or whether they are patrons who are just beginning their relationships with us. All are discovering or rediscovering knowledge, information, and resources that NDPL offers. To our patrons, old and new, seen and unseen, thank you. Our vision is to be the center of knowledge, community life, and innovation for everyone in Indianapolis. Our programs and services define a new meaning of a public library. And I'm always amazed to learn about the variety of things that are going on within our libraries. We offer not just free books, we offer experiences in a welcoming environment. We offer concerts ranging from jazz to mariachi to bluegrass. We offer the challenge of the New York Times crossword puzzle. I guess that would also include Wordle without the paywall. We offer free access to LinkedIn learning for professional growth. Need a Chromebook or a hotspot, you can check those out. Looking to grow a garden? We are home to the largest seed library in the state. NDPL programs cater to many tastes and interests. From resume writing to mastering computer skills, from Ukrainian storytime to crochet, to dragons and dungeons, we have something to fulfill, delight, and teach everyone. Picture a car seat checkup event where patrons not only receive safety tips, but may leave with a car seat if they qualify. Dive into the history and culture with an online lecture of the Black church in America. Our eviction sealing clinic is a beacon of hope to improve the odds for those who need to find new housing. We celebrate Free Comic Book Day, promote the certification of minority, women, veteran, and disabled-owned businesses in the city of Indianapolis, and contribute to environmental sustainability with our free community shared and electronics recycling events. Discovering all that our public library offers is discovering a treasure. And I'm thankful to our dedicated librarians and staff who serve the public good. And I'm thankful to serve along with the members of this board as we do our role in governance of the institution. So thank you again to everyone. Tonight, I'm looking forward, as usual, to an informative and productive meeting. And we have a full agenda, so we'll get started. I understand our vice president broke our record for long meetings at the last meeting, so. Next on the agenda is the branch manager's report. And I'll ask Ms. Carrie Genovese to step up. And while she's coming, I'll tell you that she is the Spades Park Branch Manager. She has served as branch manager at Spades Park since April of this year. Prior to that, she served as interim branch manager at NORA. Spades Park Branch has been called the tiny powerhouse thanks to impressive circulation numbers per square foot. Ms. Genovese, thank you for hosting tonight's board meeting, and we welcome your report.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Tribble, and thank you, members of the board. So excited to have you guys here today. One of my favorite things to do is to brag about this branch because it's amazing. So tonight, what we're going to talk about, I want to tell you a little bit about who we are, about who we serve, what we're doing now, and what we are focusing on for the future. So as you can see, we have a lot of fun at this branch. First, I'll tell you a little bit about the building, though. The Spades Park Library opened in 1912. It was, we got funds from the Andrew Carnegie Foundation. We are one of two Carnegie branches still in the system. We do, we did have some renovations done in the late 80s, including having an elevator put in. And we are looking forward to perhaps getting some updates done in 2026. Let's see, but more important than the building are the people who are in it. We have an amazing staff here. First of all, there's two librarians, including me. I'm the Adult Services Librarian. And then we have our tireless children's librarian, Nell, Nell German. And then also our circulation supervisor. I'm sure many of you know her. She has been here longer than she allows me to know. She will not tell me. But Ann Barnes. And she is the one who has built this team, along with Tasia before me, from the ground up. And she's taught me not just about circulation functions, but also about being a good manager and leader in the time that I've been here. So we're really, really lucky to have her here. We also have two computer lab assistants, which we do need. We have Dan Snodgrass and Brett Sexton. And one library assistant, who we recently were able to get from hourly to part-time, that's Tristan Lee. And we have one page, Robert Scott. They're all great, and they all, several of them have actually expressed interest in working for the system full-time despite starting just wanting to be part-time staff. I think that's one of the great things you'll learn about Spades Park. If you don't already know this, is that we seem to be a great incubator for the system. We take in staff and they end up going out to the rest of the system as full-time staff and spend their careers here with the public library because it's just a great place to work. And again, I just got here in April, so I inherited all this. So I need to thank Tasia and Ann for creating this great branch for me. Let's see. And, oh, and we also have two volunteers that have come on since this summer, and another one that we are in the process of onboarding as well. Let's see. Okay. And then to talk about who we serve. So we do have a small service area, 9,738. We serve five IPS schools, two charter schools and two private schools. However, one of those private schools closed this summer, Holy Cross Catholic School. So they won't be on our list next year. Let's see, 50-50 owner occupied versus renter in this area. 25% black, 15% Hispanic, 56% non-Hispanic white. Our Asian population was listed as less than 1% in the SAVI data. We do have a high percentage of people with no computers or internet, which is why we have two computer lab assistants. And we do a lot of work helping people access resources. We are truly a neighborhood branch. You'll see people sending their kids running down with their keys to pick up holds or running down for a program, little bit older kids too, especially. We have a lot of teens who will come in after school to play Fortnite on the computers. And we have, you know, just a really, you know, diverse and vibrant community here. Let's see, so we, what else am I supposed to say? We serve a lot of patrons who don't have access to internet, as I said. And we help them applying for jobs, filling out job-related paperwork, printing out paperwork, faxing government agencies, accessing resources online, and especially evaluating sources. We get a lot of young professionals coming in to work here. Also, young families coming in to attend our programs or play on the AWE computers. Many of our patrons take pride in knowing us by name. And many of them also, you will see them come in with their own young children and apologize to Ms. Ann for how they acted as teenagers here in the branch. So how we serve. So in 2022, we had 25,507 door count, 56,782 circulation of items, 107 programs, 2,114 program attendees. And we have already surpassed those numbers this year. In fact, our door count has gone up by over 9,000 already this year. So we also have Chromebooks and hotspots when they're checked in. So we do provide that service for our patrons. We are a seed library, and we have birdwatching kits for people to take advantage of the Spades Park and Brookside Park and Pogues Run area. And then, so we also do a lot of programming. We have weekly storytimes year-round. We're one of the branches that does storytimes in the summer as well as throughout the year. We have monthly art clubs. We have one for teens and one for school-age kids. Our Pause to Read program was just started this spring, this fall. And it's very popular, it's proved very popular. And then we recently hosted a teen murder mystery night. You can see a little picture there. That was a lot of fun. Staff from all across the system, including Mary Barr, participated. And we did a little mystery improv for teens, and that was a lot of fun. We had a very successful International Game Day. And then for adult programming, we have Poetry is Lit with Thomas Neeland. That grew out of a program he did here, and the patrons asked us to have him come back. We have the Whitlets Book Discussion Group that has been meeting here for years and years and years every Friday. We have, recently, we did a Can Can Book to Film discussion. When Killers of the Flower Moon came out, we did a book discussion. And then the patrons got discounted tickets to the film Across the Street. And we tabled there. And we actually met the new volunteer doing that tabling. We do have computer classes and North Star Digital Literacy. And then our Career Center, we have Dan. He goes, he does one-on-one appointments with patrons for Career Center. So looking forward, we're hoping to continue to build on the success that we have, especially with our children's programming. We have very successful numbers with that. But we would really like to create more connections with our adult and teen patrons. So to do that, we are hoping to continue to work with our community partners, be a strong part of our neighborhoods, and have a few more adult programs. We're working with facilities to install art hanging systems throughout the building and do a really nice display next year with children in the neighborhood and with professional artists. If you look downstairs, you can see we have some artwork hanging from one of our local schools, from the children there. We are also hoping to work more with our community partners, including Can Can Cinema, The Feast of Lanterns, Sochati, a local vegan and organic chocolate place. They're doing a program with us this summer. Face Low Cost Bay Neutering Clinic, we've done displays in conjunction with them. And one of the things we really hope is to nurture our community partnerships. We want to create a sense of community here at Spades Park. We've been working with the Spades Park Neighborhood Association, who is having their meeting and pitch-in here tomorrow if anyone wants to come. I've heard there's going to be a lot of food. We're hoping to work with them to create more signage for the area, including artwork specific to the Spades Park neighborhood, to help us build a sense of community and to bring people here to this branch and make sure they feel like they're a part of the community here and in the rest of Spades Park. I feel very, very privileged to be able to lead this branch with Ann and all the rest of our staff and to be part of the library system. I could keep going forever about how great this library is. I just really appreciate you guys giving me the chance to do so. And I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Just a comment and a question.
Okay.
First of all, thank you so very much for your leadership. I remember coming here several years ago when it was a need for new lighting here. And the new lighting was just, the community even said, "We need new lighting." And it was just a great opportunity to get, to just visit this branch and how, how important it is. You said you wanted to increase adult and teens' programming. What's the vision for you?
So we're hoping to, we've been, one of the reasons I want to increase our community outreach is because when we have like programming, like the basic computer classes that some adults say they need, they haven't come. So I feel like if we can get more adults in, then maybe they will show up for those more basic computer classes they say they need. So some of the adult programs we're looking into, we're meeting next week with an artist who would like to do some art programs. Those have always been really well-attended here. And we're also talking about doing some wellness programs. Those are some things that we're hoping to continue, to work on next year because that, people have said, they would really enjoy. We are also hoping to continue to work with Thomas Neeland next year. So, and, and do the poetry group because that has gotten really good feedback from our patrons. And yes, so those are the main things we're looking at. And then with the teens, we're working on building the teen art club. So that has been a slow start, but it is getting started. And the, and the, we're doing quarterly game days next year since our International Game Day was such a big success. And then we're going to also do the Teen Murder Mystery Night again next year because that was a lot of fun, and we, we had a full house for that one, so.
Perhaps some of the opportunities that you named in terms of working with Can Can might be very appealing to the teens, and some adults too, in terms of that theater.
That's, yeah.
It's an awesome place.
That's a good idea. And I actually, Abby Speck from Can Can, we had her meet with Jill Edwards, the adult programming specialist, because their ideas are so big. I was like, this is bigger than just Spades. So, so yeah, so they're definitely on board to do more work with us.
That'd be great. They're such a wonderful addition. And having the opportunity to, to really partner in the way that you're thinking is great for the teens as well as the adults.
Agreed. Agreed. Thank you.
The five IPS schools.
The five, let me pull, let me bring it up because I'm going to forget them right off the top of my head. Arsenal Tech, Hirschman Middle School, Brookside 54, Theodore Potter Spanish Immersion School, and Washington Irving School 14.
How do they, I'm getting hoarse. How do they use the library? They come to special program, programming that you have? And do you go out?
We go out to them. So, and then like tomorrow, there's, they have their community council meetings. So I'm doing the Brookside one tomorrow. We do, we do work with some of them for like book clubs and stuff like that, some of the teachers individually. But usually, we go to them and, you know, give them resources table. Like I was at Arsenal Tech two weeks ago for their senior night to tell them about the resources we have. So, yeah, so that's usually what we do.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments?
Follow-up. Did you mention Thomas Gregg in that list or no?
Did I mention what?
Thomas Gregg.
Uh-uh.
No, okay. But they're going to be together with Washington Irvington now, right?
Okay, I'm not sure.
They are.
Okay.
Under the same corporation, but just wondering. Thanks.
Thank you.
Isn't that considered one of the IPS schools? It's considered a neighborhood school. And as a neighborhood school, it wouldn't be in the listing that Pat just named.
Okay.
All right, no other questions? Thank you so much, Ms. Genovese, for your report. And thank you for hosting us, and this is a beautiful library.
Awesome.
Thanks to the team.
Thank you so much, President Tribble. Thank you, board members.
Next on the agenda is the public comment. Ms. Gilbert will?
Yes, we do have one person, David Scott. But before he comes up, we'll say, we do welcome feedback from the public about our Indianapolis libraries. And this is a time when the public may address the library board if there are several individuals representing the same group. Please select a spokesperson who does not repeat the same comments. Someone else has offered. Please note also that this public comment time is not the appropriate forum for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints, or alleged employee misconduct. Any such matter should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO or the Human Resources Department, where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. A five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker. Each speaker should give their name and the group that they're, if they're speaking on behalf of a group. And so we'll have David Scott come up.
I'd like to say greetings and welcome to Spades Park. My name is David Scott. I'm the Spades Park Neighborhood Association President. Also, I'm the founding apostle of Circle City Christian Center, celebrating 30 years of ministry here on the Near East Side. Also, the visionary founder of the African-American Restoration Movement. We call it Arm Up with two As. And it's endeavoring to, to address and reverse some of the effects that colonial slavery has had on those of African descent. So we're looking to do that with those here in the States as well as throughout the diaspora. So just like to say a few things. The relationship we have with the library is so critical, so critical. The Near East Side represents the, the most racially diverse and the poorest part of Indianapolis. So the needs are just tremendous. And so to have stability and resources coming out of the library makes the difference between success and failure. And I appreciate manager Carrie and her leadership and the team and their availability to address people as they come, as they are. And so just thrilled to have familiar faces on the board too of servants that I know have been in Indy and done some tremendous work through the years that are compassionate and building us to greater things. So, so thankful for that. One of the things we're doing as the Neighborhood Association is we, we just applied for the Indianapolis Neighborhood Resource Center grant. And we're looking to create identifying signage. This area, Brookside Park, is one of the most confusing parts of the city because there's so many curves and swings and so much stuff that sits off the main thoroughfare of rural. So what we're looking to do is establish a gateway sign on rural that says, "Welcome to Spades Park." And we're trying to team with the Brookside Park as well so we can say, "Welcome to Brookside Park," that's just east of that same light. And then have smaller signs that identify what's going on back here in the neighborhood, the library, the Can Can, and all these other organizations. On that side, you've got the park, Brookside Park, Martin University. But once people come down rural, which is the main thoroughfare, they're lost. It may be easier to find Waldorf over here than it is to find where you're going. And some of you found that out tonight. So that's part of what we're doing with this resource money is we're looking to create a true identity and identifiers for this area. So it makes us user-friendly and creates an identity for the community as well so that the city can recognize this is where this part of the city begins, and this is what they have going on over there, and this is why everybody should come over and participate. So the connection we have with the library as well will help us, and the Can Can have known their owners and leadership for 25 years as well. The Near East Side is growing in its defining brand. And we're wanting to truly be part of that and by helping the city recognize where we are, what's going on, the good work that's being done, and invite others to join us. That's all I have to share. If you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Yes, David, so good to see you this evening.
Good seeing you too, Dave.
Still doing the work.
Thank you.
Are you having any challenges getting the signage that you want?
It's definitely a collaborative work because you're talking, we're working with the mayor's office.
Yeah.
DPW, there's codes and things that we're, we're navigating through right now. But we're determined because we have to have some clear identifiers. Or we're losing a lot of people that are trying to find what's going on over here. So we're trying to, we're trying to solve the puzzle.
I don't know what we can do to assist you, but we're here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Minutes from the regular meeting from October 23rd, 2023 have been distributed. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll now have a roll call.
Mr. Biederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Mertada.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. The Finance Committee chaired by Dr. Patricia Payne and members Louis Palacio and Dr. Eugene White.
Yes, um, Mary, please come up. CFO, Mary.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. It's been a long day.
A long day.
I think you're too hot.
I do want to remind everybody to get close to your mics. Getting some look from our soundboard over there. Make sure that we can hear you, please.
Okay. Again, good evening, everyone. So I'm, I'm going to present the revenue today. We're at October 2023, and this is 10/12 of the year, which is 83%. So ideally, we would like to be at 83% of our, receiving our revenue. However, we are at 67%, which is still normal because again, we receive our property taxes May and June and November, December. And as you can see, that our inter-governal revenue is 3% lower than last year, but it's still consistent as it was la, um, last year. And we receive the remaining of the revenue in December. And the charges for services, the public printing and fax revenue seems to be consistent month to month. Plus, we receive some catering revenue as well. And then our miscellaneous revenue, the interest revenue continues to grow. We're at 991,665 interest earned year-to-date. Huja Fund has, their interest percentage is 5.4%. And Trust Indiana is 5.3, 3.7%. The investment statement is on page 25 of the board report, and the cash flow statement is on page 23. I bring those to your attention because you'll see that, um, the cash flow statement, how or when we receive our revenue and that in November, December, we will receive a quite amount of revenue coming in for the remainder of the year, as well as our investment statements, which will reflect the interest earned for those two funds right there, the Huja Fund and Trust Indiana.
Quick, quick question.
Yes.
If we're at 64% right now and we're going to get the other part of the property tax fund, November, December, does that mean we're likely going to be over 100%? Or is it, it's not like 50-50?
No, we're not going to be at 100% or over 100%, but we'll be close to 100%.
Great.
On this slide right here, you'll see the revenue. On the left, you see by month for October 23 versus October 20, 2022. I can't talk to this year. October 2023 versus October 2022. I also noticed after we submitted this to communications that the, there's a date of September, but these are actually October numbers. So there needs to be a revision right there. So you can see those number matches the numbers that I just ran over on slide one. And then on your right side, you'll see the year-to-date. This is the 2023 year-to-date versus 2022 year-to-date revenue. Also included, the year-to-date, I mean, the month-to-date as well with the year-to-date. So you'll see month-to-date, the difference between the month-to-date and year-to-date. Month-to-date is the 10-month, and year-to-date, the actual budget is the whole total budget. So you'll see four bars on the year-to-date side on the right. Does anyone have any questions in regards to these graphs?
So, sorry, one more question. On the right graph, the year-to-date graph, the gray bar, it says 2023 actual budget.
Yeah, that's the actual budget.
Does that just mean it's just the 2023 budget?
Yeah, the whole year budget. And then the yellow bar is the 10-month budget up-to-date. Okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Any additional questions? Now I have Mary Rankin go over the expenditures.
These are the expenses for the operating fund. And we show that the personal services and benefits, which is our largest category, is under the 83%, so it's favorable. 83% being just the percentage of the year that has gone by. And we're at 72% of the budget expense year-to-date. Supplies is slightly lower than we had budgeted. Other services and charges had a 9% increase when compared to the year before. And that's primarily the increase in legal expenses and cleaning services as we had a new agreement for cleaning services this year. The capital outlay year-to-date is less than last year at this time. And we have the chart as well. On the next slide. Oh, I thought it was going to go away. Here on the left is the month-to-date budget. And on the right, year-to-date, where we include the 2023 in the blue bar. 2022 is the orange. The year-to-date budget is gray, and the actual full budget is the yellow bar. So it's going pretty well. Do we have any questions on this?
No. No questions about the treasurer's report?
Okay. We also have additional slide. This is the XBE monthly and year-to-date information that I was going to include with the treasurer's report.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
This right here, we're going to present maybe once a quarter to the board. This reflects where we are currently as of September 2023. I did receive October 23 numbers as well, but I didn't bring them to me, bring them with me. But these are great numbers as well. So at the top, you'll see where it is tracked by month, and at the bottom is the year-to-date information. So if you go to your far right, where the MBE is for the month, our goal is 15%. And as you can see, we're at 26.1% for the, as of September 2023. And overall, for the year-to-date, at the bottom, it says 39.7%. So we over exceed our budget for the MBE. And for WBE, our goal is 8%. And for the month, we're at 4.2%. Overall, year-to-date is 8.1%. And then for the VBE, which is for veterans, our goal is 3%. Yeah, okay, 3%. And we're at, for the month of September, we was at 0.4%, but overall, we're at 8.1%. And then for a disability for the month of September, we was only at 1%, 0%, but for overall year-to-date, we're at 0.110%. That is the only category where we did not meet our goal. But overall, we have well exceeded our goals for the XBE. Anyone having questions in regards to this?
Not so much a question as a comment that I had made earlier in regards to folks who have different abilities and differing abilities. How might we, not at this meeting, of course, but in the future, start really giving a great deal more care to looking for and identifying individuals who have different abilities? Those who are deaf, those who are blind? And how do we actually go to places to find out more? And I know that Deb Simmons has been doing a great job of looking for opportunities. So it's not a criticism, it's a comment, and I hope that we can do better.
As well as my purchasing and diversity manager, she does a great job as well. Looking for those vendors. But we can have a further discussion in our committee if you'd like.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And this expense does not include the books. This is related to our operating budget. Well, no, I'm sorry, the whole budget, all expenses, including the construction projects.
Just a question on that. So it does not include the purchase of our collections?
Right.
Okay. And just for context, how much of our budget goes toward purchase of collections?
I think, I think we spend around 2.4 million in purchasing for collections.
Thank you.
So are you, are the vendors included? Would those count, would presenters count? Or people who run programs for the library, are they counted in here as vendors?
If they are paid, they are counted in these numbers as vendors.
No, because they don't have to register with us with our purchase order process.
They wouldn't be.
They're not included in here.
Okay.
So we could perhaps have some more than if we include those, yeah.
I think one of the things that you may want to do when you present this, the why, is that we have a goal and a strategic plan that we are exceeding now. However, like Dr. Matata said, there are other individuals and organizations out there that could enhance our numbers somewhat. And I think your encouragement to kind of look beyond the known entities to others would be very important. But the big celebration is that this is a realistic strategic goal, and we're meeting and exceeding that. However, we're not satisfied. We're going to continue the prestige. So I want to commend you and, of course, Adam and Purchasing and all of the, all of the other entities, and encourage you to keep up the great work, and we can keep on building on this achievement. So thank you.
No, thank you. That was it for the treasurer's report, but we do have resolutions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just another.
You have another slide.
Dr. Palacio. Question, or if you can illustrate what the library is doing to get those success, sort of meeting the strategic plan objectives and exceeding them. Can you illustrate what the library is doing, like the vendor event, partnering with other agencies?
Well, we do have vendor fair. I was looking at my purchasing manager because she can go in more detail. She's the expert of that. But we do have vendor fairs, and she does partner and attend other vendor fairs to collaborate and meet other vendors to gather that information.
I would say it's emphasized when we do our requests for proposals that we want, that this is our goal. And that they are to provide information and seek out sub-recipients when they can. I mean, sub-vendors. And then we're counting the sub-vendors in here.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name's Goins Simmons, and I am the manager of purchasing as a fire diversity. So your question was, what do we do and who do we partner with? So I have partnerships with both the city and the state. I attend their annual events, and they also attended mine, which I had on November 14th. And it was a very successful event. And I'm part of Business Equity for Indy, which basically focuses on the African-American community and businesses for those, trying to grow those partnerships with those businesses. Collaborate with the Indianapolis Airport Authority, Holly Harrington. Holly Harrington.
Mm-hmm.
Is that her name?
Yes.
I thought I was saying it wrong. She's actually my peer advisor, so I reach out to her if I have questions or, you know, just anything that I need help with. She's a very good source for me as well. So we collaborate as a group, so it's kind of a family. We are, we're all in the same, you know, business, and we all have the same goals. And so we kind of work together to help each other reach their goals.
You've done an awesome job.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and it's come to our attention several times, not only by Lolita, but also by Adam Parsons, when he's looking at and giving us information about the facilities. We get that, and so thank you so very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
I think at the Facilities Committee meeting, Dr. Matata made a very important point. And that's why I say we are very pleased with your work. You're doing great things. We're meeting and exceeding the goal right now. But she mentioned something about the visually impaired, the blind, and how do you expand that type of collaboration? You communicate with institutions that produce those kind of people. So you communicate with the school for the deaf and ask them, do they have entrepreneurs or people with those kind of disabilities that are an entrepreneur, what have you? That goes beyond what we know, takes another step, maybe additional work. But in order to really exceed it, like she was mentioning at the Facilities Meeting, that's what you have to do. And we have two institutions here in town that churn out graduates in those areas. So it would probably behoove us to create a relationship with whoever is in charge there just to have communication. May not expand, but at least we can say that we made the extra effort beyond the city, county, et cetera.
Okay, I will definitely do that. Thank you for that.
I just wanted to make sure that we recognize all the work that you're doing.
Right.
And your team and everybody else. Because we're not getting to these numbers in a vacuum.
Exactly.
There's a lot going on, and Holly's been a great champion of the community as well. So you have a great advisory there.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So hearing no more questions or discussion. Do we have a motion to accept the report of the treasurer for October 2023 for filing for audit?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Doctor White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion passes. Moving on? You can just take these.
So next, okay, so next on the agenda is four resolutions. The first three comes out of our IT department. And I would like to invite Shanika up to review these next three resolutions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. I have resolution number 74. I'll start with first. And it's for our basic maintenance of our existing network infrastructure. This is an annual resolution that goes before the board every year is for the warranty for our equipment and for our firewall subscription software. This has been budgeted, sorry, approved out of committee. And Lolita sent y'all the additional documents and proposals and evaluations and...
I sent them the resolutions and asked if they had a question.
Oh, okay, because I asked for additional information. Did y'all have any, I didn't get any questions, so I was just wondering.
No questions.
No question, okay, well, this is great. No questions. Wasn't for sure. Okay, wonderful, so thank you for that. And so it passed out of committee, and it has been budgeted for 2024. Is there any questions for this annual resolution?
Madam Chair, are we taking each of these resolutions individually? Or we're going to bundle the three of them?
Those three, they're all related to...
You could do 74 by itself, 75 and 76.
Okay, yeah.
So do 75 and 76 together since they're basic internet?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They got a vote on 74.
Got a vote, okay.
I move to accept 74.
Thank you.
Second.
The resolution for basic maintenance of our existing network infrastructure has been moved and seconded. Is, is there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now I have resolution, uh, resolution. Resolution 75 and 76 is for our basic internet access services for our internet services. And so this year, we have decided to go with Crown Point. And the reason is we're moving from 1 gig to 2 gig, and it came out to the same price as our former vendor, Aluminum. So that would just be the only change, which is Resolution 76. And then Resolution 75 is our continual vendor, which is AT&amp;T. And that's for Central. And both of these has been budgeted into 2024 budget.
Move to approve.
Actually, we need consent to consider these together.
Okay, so we, I'd like to get consent from the board to consider Resolution 75 and 76 together since they are similar topics.
So moved.
Consent?
Yeah.
Thank you. So now I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 75 for basic internet service, internet access with Crown Castle, and Resolution, Resolution 76 for a basic internet access with AT&amp;T.
It's still moved.
Are we ready?
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, the motions have been moved, the motion has been moved and seconded for Resolution 76 and Resolution 75. Is there any, are there any questions? Hearing none, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Doctor White. Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motions carry. Moving on to Resolution 77.
Thank you. Resolution 77 is transfers between accounts and classifications.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The background for the resolution, the transfer is from, the operating transfers to move funds from Character 1, 2, and 4 to Characters 2 and 3. The funds being transferred from 1 to Character 3 will be used to cover security services, security services expenses through the end of this year. And the funds being transferred from Character 2 to Character 3 will be used for the renewed technology subscription for the emphysean branch programs. The funds being transferred from Character 4 to Character 2 will be used to purchase replacement furniture for branches. On the second page of the resolution, you'll see the amounts from the 150,000 from salaries adjustment being moved down to... being moved down to Character 3, which is for charges and services and security services. And then Department of Office Supplies of 2,000 is being moved down to other contractual services. And then 18,000 from capital furniture is being moved from 11,000 to office supplies furniture and as well as 7,000 to the Department of Office Supplies. This also went through our Finance Committee.
So this is Resolution 77 for transfer between accounts and classification. Is there, it's noted that the resolution received a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. So is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Please, Ms. Gilbert.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
Thank you.
That is it for the Finance.
I conclude your report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to have this last slide update. We filed the 2023 bonds with the LGF on October 24th. So that's been filed, and it was closed on November the 16th. And we received the funds on November the 16th for the three bonds.
Great.
Now, I promise you, that's it. Any questions?
How you getting cute, huh?
I like that.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the committee report from the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee. Mr. Raymond Beederman, Chair, Dr. Matata, Dr. Lewis, and Dr. Payne, members.
Great. I'd like to invite up, we have two items for discussion today. Like to invite up Tishan Galarse for the first of the two items. Thank you very much. You're already sitting there.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to present Resolution 78-2023. All right. This resolution is for additional payment, for additional pay, payment to all our employees that are active as December 2nd. The amounts that we have identified will be for full-time employees, $1,800. For part-time, $600. And for hourly and pages, $500. The total amount will be paid to the employees is $520,500. And the total amount with FICA and PERF, it will be $626,618. This is just surplus that we have budgeted. And we would like to give it back to the employees as a thank you.
Great.
All right. And this did receive a favorable unanimous, doubly unanimous, coming out of committee.
Awesome. Okay. It was noted that Resolution 78, 2023, the approval of additional payments to employees for year end, received a favorable recommendation from the Diversity Policy and HR Committee. Is there a second to this recommendation?
Second.
We'll now have, are there any questions or discussions?
So just, would this be distributed in a lump sum, or is it spread out over the year?
It's just a lump sum, and then the employees will receive it on the payment on December 8th.
Dr. Palacio?
I just want to say thank you to all the staff of the library, all you guys do every day.
Any further questions or comments?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays. Expand that a little bit, Dr. White. Happy holidays, happy new year. So hearing no further comment, we'll have a roll call. Ms. Gilbert?
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries. The audience went wild. Let's see who was in our audience.
All right. The second item is our annual review of the bylaws. So bylaws went through a revision by our council. These revisions largely were just non-substantive. They removed gender identification from a lot of the bylaws. They just needed some cleanup that way. There was some, the way that the board was named throughout the document was not consistent. And so we cleaned that up to get consistency there. There were 18 changes that were enumerated in the bylaws. The last of those changes was about changing the amount of time for public comment from five minutes to three minutes. That was Change 18. The board, well, the committee recommended accepting 17 of the 18 changes and not accepting the change from five minutes to three minutes for public comment. So that would be the committee's recommendation for voting today, is to accept 17 of the 18 changes.
Any further information that we need to share?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. And that would be that I think the committee really listened to the concerns expressed about reducing the time for public comment. And so I think this decision to maintain the current amount of time was a very wise one.
Thank you. Yeah, I know from other public organizations that our time is very generous. And as a matter of fact, it doesn't usually extend our meetings. We just had some extenuating circumstances that have caused the comment period to go as long as an hour and a half. But I think that in normal times, this won't be an issue. So happy to move forward with the, voting on this resolution with the recommendation of the committee in mind. Because it is, this is a board resolution, though, we will need to have a motion to approve the bylaws as amended. But actually, will we have to amend?
So I think the proper motion would be to make a motion to accept changes 1 through 17 as proposed to the bylaws. That would be the proper motion, if someone wanted to make that.
So I'll accept the motion.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
It's been noted and seconded, moved and seconded to approve the bylaw amendments, numbers 1 through 17. Is there any further discussion?
Just, just to note that I thought the committee did a nice job discussing this as well and really came to a good consensus. So I know there were a couple of different iterations of this that we went through and decided just to keep it as is. So I thought that was a good collaborative effort.
That's great.
The only other point I would make is that the version that's in your packets includes, does include Change 18. So we will be modifying that before we file this document with the state library. So I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that is included, but it will be changed back. That change will be removed before we file this version of the bylaws with the state library.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And I want to thank everybody for your attention to this. We've done some modernizing in terms of our language and getting in sync with state library recommendations. And thank you again for the thoughtful review regarding our public comment. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to the Facilities Committee report, that the Facilities Committee is chaired by Dr. White, and its members are Dr. Lane and Dr. Matata. Mr. Lane.
The doctor.
Mr. Doctor.
Not yet.
We will get there soon.
Another 10 years.
Okay. Adam is here to help us go through the resolutions. And I just want to thank him for his efforts in helping to facilitate the unreadiness around one or two of these resolutions. I think I can say that the Facilities Committee voted to recommend to the board to do pass on the resolutions that we're presenting this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to Adam for explanation.
All right. So I have seven total items tonight. Let me make sure this works. All right. So just like last month, the first two are sister resolutions. Resolutions 80 and 81, approval to award a construction services contract for the replacement of exterior windows at Nora for 80 and Pike for 81. So renovation is planned for all or most of 2024. It does include HVAC. Current exterior windows were very old and very inefficient, as noted in the photos that Dr. Palacio took earlier in the month. And the new windows will provide myriad benefits, but one of them is to actually enhance and bring to full fruition the HVAC that we're spending lots of money on to replace. So Nora, the awarded cost is $169,755. Pike, the awarded cost is $199,269. Both of those combined are $6,000 under the combined budget for both projects. And they will be funded out of the 2019 bond, which is Fund 479. The vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will be performing 99% of the work. We use an invitation to quote process. That process I went through with the Facilities Committee and what Indiana code governs that process. We sent out notices to 26 vendors, 13 of which were XBE vendors, and to business development organizations. We had a pre-bid conference and a site tour for both locations on September 27th. We received one quote from Holiday Construction Group, and they were the lowest responsive and most responsible bidder. And they were vetted, that's the final one. They were reviewed and vetted by the architect, who was doing both the Pike and Nora branches. And they agreed that they are up to the task for the work. And their waiver for XBE participation was approved by the purchasing manager. And we are asking for approval of both of these resolutions tonight. Project completion is targeted for February 29th. That is leap day next year. And that is prior to the beginning of the major interior renovations, particularly at Nora. Any questions?
Thank you. I'd like...
I'll be willing, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I'd like to take these two proposals, 80 and 81, these two resolutions together. May I have consent from the board to do that?
Consent.
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 Consent from everybody? Okay. Okay, great. So we've received Resolution 80, 2023, approval to award a construction services contract for replacement of exterior windows, exterior windows at Nora Branch, and 81 for the replacement of exterior windows at the Pike Branch. I will entertain a motion to vote on both of those together.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
It was noted that Resolutions 80 and 81, actually, they received a favorable recommendation from the Facilities Committee. So we'll now have a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back. Is there any, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne. Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
Okay, great. Thank you. The next resolution is Resolution 82-2023, approval to award a construction manager as constructor services contract for the learning curve at Central Library Renovation Project. So we are updating the learning curve, as was part of the strategic, the most recent strategic plan. And as part of that, we would like to hire a construction manager as constructor, CMC, also known as construction manager at risk. They're one and the same. They manage and are ultimately responsible for all the work. If we were to just hire a general contractor, the library would assume all risk and liability. The CMC, as we would like to hire a CMC, they would assume all liability and risk. And they would further be required to meet or exceed, or at least endeavor to meet or exceed our XBE goals. So the, the cost of $454,000 is included in the overall project cost of approximately 6.2 million. This will be funded via the new bond, one of the three new bonds that we recently received, 2023A. The vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform 100% of the CMC work. But as I said, they will be responsible for meeting the construction XBE goals. We use the request for proposal process, also covered at this month's Facilities Committee, the statute that governs that. Public notice went out August 15th. We sent the notice to 37 vendors directly, 15 of whom were XBE vendors and 10 business organizations. We had a pre-proposal conference on August 21st. We received one proposal from Stens Corporation. If I can go back there. As this is a services contract and not a public works capital project, we are not required to award the lowest responsive and most responsible bidder. We, similar to the other projects, we received, we received one bid. They were vetted by ourselves and the architect on the project, and both entities found Stens Corporation up to the task for this project. And these are the milestones that we're projecting for the entire project. Any questions?
Thank you.
I got a question. So just to, just to put it out there. So how many projects this year have we only received one bid for? Well, three, at least. We, it's, it's, we've had this, we had this discussion at the Facilities Committee. Not several, but more than we would like. Unfortunately, it's kind of the nature of the beast right now. I could go into a long monologue of the past 12 years of low interest rates. But what has happened is that both private and public sector organizations have loaded up on debt for construction programs. And both XBE and non-XBE companies have a very long 12, 24, 36-month-long pipeline. That is especially acute for XBE vendors, as fortunately, most organizations are putting these goals in place to hire XBEs. However, that means that the demand for them has skyrocketed, and they have even longer pipelines of projects. So unfortunately, receiving one or two bids is kind of the reality right now. So we had a discussion, Gwen Simmons and I have talked about how to potentially expand. We had several good feedback comments from the Facilities Committee about how to expand our funnel. Ultimately, that is what we can do. We can expand our funnel. We can bring as many horses as we can to the water, but we cannot force them to drink. But we definitely can increase the number that we bring.
Okay, and then one last question. With these three that we're approving in succession, does that take us out of alignment with our goal that we saw from earlier today?
Well, it will have some impact, I don't know how much. Because, for instance, this is $454,000 compared to, Alita, how much have we spent this year? How, what's our, how much have we spent combined in 2023, year-to-date? What, 30-something million dollars?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't have it going to be out.
It, it's in the tens of millions of dollars, definitely. And so, you know, half a million dollars rounding up would have a not negligible, but not a substantial impact on that. However, that's $454,000 over the course of, you know, 12, 16, 18 months. And so it will, at that point, it will have a somewhat negligible impact on our overall XBE goals.
Great, thank you.
And Adam, I think you also pointed out that this vendor will be managing the project that has a $6.2 million budget, right? And that $6.2 million budget will be subject to our diversity goals, our XBE goals?
Yes, yeah, approximately half, half a million, 550,000 of that is for loose furniture, which would be a separate contract, but it's in the overarching project. The actual construction budget is just over $4 million, I believe, right now. And yes, they will be, that will be subject to our XBE goals, and the liability will fall on Stens to meet or exceed our XBE goals.
And they'll be providing that information to us?
Yeah, I will say this too. Since this is a capital project, and Mr. Brown, if you could make sure I don't say anything off-base, the lowest responsive and most responsible bidder requirements will be in effect, because this is a public works project, even for the subcontractors. And so, the, Stens will be liable for the XBE goals, but they will be held to that lowest requirement. Is there anything that I'm missing on that? Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. It was noted that the Resolution 82, for approval to establish a guaranteed maximum price for the construction manager for the learning curve at Central, received a favorable recommendation from the Facilities Committee. So is there a second to this recommendation?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Biederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Martada. Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne. Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right. The next item is Resolution 83-2023. This is requesting approval to award a construction services contract for the Nora Branch renovation project. This is for the interior construction of Nora Branch. There we go. So the interior construction is quite broad, but it is vastly interior. We are doing very little exterior work, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. We have an expanded community room, general neutral patron restrooms, and optimized staff and patron areas within the current footprint. So the overarching project budget was 5.4 million. The architect's estimate for the interior work was 3.16 million. The awarded, the requested awarded cost is 2.88 million, which is below the estimate. This will be funded by the second of the three bonds we received this year, the 2023B bond. The vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform 67% of the work. Four subcontractors combined are MBEs and will perform 32% of the work. And two subcontractors are WBE certified and will perform 1% of the work. We use the invitation-to-bid process per the public works statute, so this is a public works project. Public notice sent on 9/15 and 9/22, as required. We sent this out to 48 vendors, 20 of which were XBEs. Pre-bid conference was on October 17th. We received four bids. And if you look in the board action request, the four bids and their pertinent information are tallied there. Gillette Construction was the lowest responsive and most responsive bidder, even with all four alternates that we requested. Nora will close down December 10th. December 9th will have their last day of service. And Communications has been doing a great job for both this and Pike and the Curve and Glendale at letting patrons know what the schedules are. December 20, December through February is move prep and mobilization. At the same time, this will be for the interior construction. At the same time, we'll be performing work on the exterior windows. March through January of '25 is construction, and estimated timeline of February 22nd, 2025 for the ribbon cutting. Any questions?
Question? So these projects are also listed on our website, right?
Yes, they should be, or they will be.
Okay. So when you mentioned 48, that's like the minimum amount of vendors that would see the notice, either through email or website?
Oh, yeah, sorry. When you said project, I thought you were talking about communication to patrons, about where their holds are going to be. If you're talking about the invitation to bid, yes, definitely, that is on our vendor opportunities page, and it is listed on the website.
So 48 is kind of the bottom?
Yes, the bare minimum.
Bare minimum that we are hitting?
Yes.
Through our communication channels. How do we select, or how do we make the list of those vendors?
Well, we have an internal list of vendors that we know of, who are in the field. Gwen also uses the Indianapolis and, do you use just Indianapolis or Indiana?
I have the city and state.
City and state. Vendor lists for vendors who are in the industry. And that's how we get our direct vendor list. We also advertise this on the website, as you mentioned. So private parties or private sector parties can actively search, or will come up in their search results. We are also required to post this publicly in two newspapers, most often as the Indy Star and the Indianapolis Business Journal. We oftentimes use the Recorder as well. That has to be posted publicly twice, at least seven days apart, per the statute. And those are the big three. We had no business development organizations on this one, but we do also add them to plan rooms. So if you're not familiar with that, plan rooms are where you post plans that can then be downloaded for a fee, because the plan room hosts them. And that's another area on the web that private sector can search actively. I've been on the flip side of this. It's a weekly thing. You check the plan room, check the plan room, see if anything new got, came up.
When you say increase the funnel, you're talking about the list of our vendors in our survey list?
Yes, yeah. Increase our, our list of vendors that we contact directly. And if there are any other ways that we can increase, that would be active, if we could increase passive marketing, we would like to pursue both.
Thanks.
So, the, the Resolution 83, for approval to, to award construction services for the Nora Branch renovation project, received a favorable recommendation from the Facilities Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Biederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Martada.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne. Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Now, if you'll bear with me and pardon the chair, Mr. Parsons, when you finish your presentation, let me know, and then I will take the motion, and then we will have questions and conversation or discussion after the motion is put on the table. So I've been doing that in the wrong order.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is Resolution 84-2023. This is requesting approval of the Sixth Amendment to indenture lease and lease agreement for the Glendale branch. Glendale Construction is, has been delayed until Q1 of next year at the current time. Our lease is up December 31st of this year. And so, in order to continue to operate the current Glendale location, we need to extend the lease for a certain amount of time. I am requesting a six-month extension at $18,750 per month, and this is funded via the operating budget. The reason I'm requesting six months, oh, actually, let me go to any other slide. Okay. The lease extension, similar to the previous five extensions, and Kite did agree to keep the same $9 per square foot rate as the previous lease extensions. Currently, we would like to operate the old Glendale until February 24th. March 30 will be the first day of service at the new Glendale with the ribbon cutting. And I'd like to extend this through June 30, 2024, to end the lease and return the property to Kite. The reason I'm asking for six months and not just three is twofold. One, I want to ensure that there is some lead time, should any other supply chain issues. We are down to the two last items, structural glass and the air handling unit. I believe the air handling unit was delivered last week. But to be sure, I just want to give us a little bit more time, excuse me, to allow for that. And also, I would like a few months to ensure that we have put the property back in the type of condition that Kite requires it to be, and so we don't incur any fines or fees. It is my estimate that the approximately $56,000 that we will spend in the three months after the grand opening will be well worth it to avoid any fines or fees that could be multiples of that. That's it.
Thank you. It was noted that Resolution Number 84, approval of the Sixth Amendment to the lease agreement for Glendale Branch, received a favorable recommendation from the Facilities Committee. Is there a second to this recommendation?
Second.
Okay, now, is there any discussion, or are there any questions for Mr. Parsons? Hearing none, we'll move to the roll call.
Mr. Biederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Martada.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne. Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 85?
The next one is Resolution 85-2023, approval to award a services contract for security services. Before I move forward, I have to point out two mistakes on the resolution itself. If you go to the resolution, the second line of whereas references housekeeping and janitorial services, that needs to be changed to security services. And on the back page, same mistake under the title. That needs to be changed to security services. So I apologize for that. Alita's eagle eyes caught that today. So I was happy to have her as my backup. Okay. So, the security needs have changed with the LSA program that was introduced early in 2022. We are now moving to have LSAs, which is our Library Security Assistant Program, provide all open-hour security at Central Library specifically, and any other branches that have LSAs posted to them. So we needed to issue this RFP as our current vendor ally had been extended four or five times, and we were at the end of the contract that we normally, the contract time that we normally use to issue a new RFP. So the estimated annual cost of in-house security is about $350,000. The operating budget for all security services is $500,000, and so this is covered by the 2024 budget. The vendor is a city-certified MBE, VBE, and will self-perform 100% of the work. As an aside, and I hope I'm not getting too much into the purchasing side of things, when a, when a vendor is dual or triple certified, that we choose one certification and apply the entire amount of their work towards that one goal. We use the RFP process as governed by Indiana Code 522. Public notices in papers were sent on 10/17 and 24. We directly notified 28 vendors, 22 of whom were XBE vendors. And we held a pre-proposal conference on October 26th. Five proposals were received. Marshall Security LLC was scored by the Evaluation Committee to be the best overall option for NPL, and we are requesting that they be awarded. I had a phone conversation with them today to verify that the five weeks leading up to the new year will be enough time for them to prep and make sure they have enough labor, and to have them trained on our processes and procedures. And they verified that that was the case. And they will start the new security schedule in January of 2024. Any questions?
That concludes your presentation.
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you.
So it was noted that Resolution 85, the approval to award services contract, a services contract for security services was discussed at the Facility, Facilities Committee. We need a motion to approve this resolution, please.
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
And then I'll also note that we are looking at the resolution with the changes that Mr. Parsons noted with the language. Okay, is there any discussion?
I had a question. It says on the, the fiscal and strategic impact that the costs that are not included are ones that speak to the supplemental necessity of security during certain hours. And they are not included in the figure above. What kind of estimates do we have for those?
That will vary. Our estimate is approximately $150,000, which is the other half of the security services budget. Right at the moment, we are going to a new expansion of the LSA program in that we are trying to have LSAs, specifically those who are part-time at 20 hours, cover special events, cover vacation time, and allow them to have more hours if necessary. We talked to our event staff, and they were very interested and wanted to proceed with LSAs covering security at special events rather than our third-party contractor.
Rather than leaving that kind of information off of the document that includes us knowing what else, what other funds are going to be used, we have that amount of the $500,000. $350,000 were included here, but we don't have an allocation for that other amount. So it sounds as if you're kind of just saying, well, we anticipate, rather than including that kind of information here in the document.
Well, the same could be said about construction documents.
But I'm not talking about the construction documents. I'm talking about this particular service document.
Okay. If you want a line-by-line allocation of the 2024 budget, I can happily provide that to you.
I don't know if it's a necessary line-by-line allocation of the budget, but the language that you've just shared, which is very important, is that the coverage will be anticipated. And we don't know how much that might be. We're just saying, oh, it could be. That's not the best way to run the operations or the fiscal allocations.
Well, we didn't know that we would have enough money to give people one-off bonuses this year. There's a lot we don't know about the budget, and I'm, that's, I'm honestly telling you that I do not know. And that's, I'm honestly telling you, that I do not know what we have. I know that we have a $500,000 budget for security services. My best estimate for this is $350,000. And other security services might be required in the, you know, outside of this, on top of the 350, I don't know.
It would not have been an issue for you to assume that the $150,000 left over could be used for that with emergencies situation we have to deal with if we exceed that number. And I think, I don't know, Dr. Matata, I think what she's saying is we could tie it up so there are no loose ends. I mean, $350,000 for the vendor and $150,000 for the LSAs would have tied the whole thing up. And if we had emergencies beyond that, you know how we have to deal with that.
Okay. Yeah, I could have done that. However, the LSA program is funded out of our salary budget as those costs come from there. The extra 150, we have a $500,000 budget. I anticipate security services from this particular company to be $350,000. It could go over. I hope it does not. And we can save some money so we can put that towards bonuses for next year. However, we do have up to 100 or up to $500,000 should our LSAs not be able to provide the hours that we are estimating. And part of the point of this contract is to be as a backstop to our LSAs. Be they sick, on vacation, any other use of PTO, be the position open. And so that would move money from, or that wouldn't move money. That would just be additional costs beyond of our perfect estimate of costs.
I guess, and I don't know, I don't want to put words in Dr. Matata's mouth, but if you allocate $500,000 for security overall and you have appropriated $350,000 for the vendor, then you have $150,000 left for LSAs or whatever the emergency is. If you exceed that, then we have to deal with some other procedures. But to avoid loose ends, if it's budgeted $500,000 and you've gone to appropriate $350,000 for the vendor, then for LSA, to me, to tie it up into a $150,000 package, really takes care of what she's saying. We're not leaving any loose ends from that amount. And then if we have to have an emergency, we have to deal with that accordingly. But that at least ties up the $500,000 for security. So I thought that's what she was saying, Adam.
May I have a point of clarification? The $500,000 is a character three expense? Is that correct?
It's a budgeted amount, isn't it?
And it's budgeted in character three, all of it? Or part of it is also budgeted in character one?
Character one being salaries?
Yes.
Yeah, character, this is all character three.
So this is all character three? So we're saying that we have budgeted $500,000 for external security services for 2024.
Yes.
But we are securing a contract for $350,000. Well, for $350,000. And based on your estimate of what those security services will provide or will be, estimate of what security services will be needed. And so there's $150,000 that's available if our needs for external security extend beyond that $350,000.
That is almost correct. This contract is not for $350,000. This contract is for a certain set of rates, given certain services at certain operating hours.
Okay.
I included in there that my estimate, given the feedback of the rates and given updated information since we created the 2024 budget, which was several months ago, is that this contract will cost us 300, this particular contract with this one vendor will cost us $350,000 within the line item in character three, of which we have $500,000 annually budgeted.
And is there a not-to-exceed value in this contract?
Not that we have written in there right now. There is no contract yet. This is the, I'm asking to approve a response to an RFP. And at certain rates that the Evaluation Committee and also certain services that the Evaluation Committee would like to award to Marshall Security, the contract comes afterward. And if you would like a not-to-exceed, we can negotiate that.
Well, I think that would, I believe, that would take care of the concern about what happens if our need exceeds what's budgeted. Dr. Matata?
What's your, I'd like to hear the recommendation from our fiscal officer. Thank you, Madam Chair. The recommendation for the best way to approach this?
Well, we kind of like what Adam stated. The budget for 2024 was already created with the $500 budget for this.
By what?
$500,000.
$500,000.
Would you come to the mic, please?
I don't have the budget right in front of me. But for security services, it's approximately $500,000 budgeted for 2024. I think Adam is stating that his proposal with the estimate would come up approximately at 350,000? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Yes. So it's just an estimate. But it'd be great if we could put a clause in there not to exceed 500,000 because we have moved monies from character one to character three to cover the expense for security services.
And so your recommendation is that, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. So your recommendation is that we actually put that language in this?
Yes, I recommend to put the language of not to exceed 500,000.
Is that much is budgeted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. And then if there is further need, then you would need to just come back.
It would be a two-step analysis at that point. You would be making a motion to, there'd be a requirement to come back and get a board approval to amend the contract as well as potentially move dollars, if necessary, to move dollars. So you would have two portions of, for any modification that would be required.
So can, just a point. I, thank you very much, but I'm going to disagree with you. And the reason I'm going to disagree is we're setting the rates, right? We have, we actually have no idea how much of this money we're going to use. I mean, what Adam did is he said, these are the off-hours. This is the staffing we're going to need in the off-hours. This is the rate. So it's going to be 350. But if we have a bigger need, then we have $150,000 that we can use for that already. If we go beyond that, then we need to move money between characters, which is one resolution for the board. But if we have a not-to-exceed in the contract, then we're going to need two resolutions for the board in order to, in order to have security. Because we'll need to amend the contract to put in a new not-to-exceed amount. And we'll also have to move money between characters because we only budgeted $500,000. So if we don't have the not-to-exceed in the contract, all we'll have to do is move money over because we've already set the rates, right? Because the contract is just setting the rates.
And right now, we don't have a clause in front of us.
Right. And we're not approving the contract.
Exactly.
We're just approving who is going to be awarded the RFP. And then they'll negotiate the contract, and then we'll see that.
And then we'll see that. That's, that's the problem that I'm seeing with this.
No, you would not, you would not see the, you would not see the contract. The resolution authorizes the contract to be drafted with changes required by the CEO in consultation with legal counsel. So you do not get an approval of the contract.
Okay.
And that's the normal process.
This is a normal process.
And the other, and I apologize too. The other thing is that you may not have to move it from another character. There's actually the possibility that you would have capacity within character three, which also would not require a board approval.
Correct.
So, so our normal process would be to approve the award of this. Then the administration would handle the execution of the contract as well as managing the provisions of the contract to ensure that it stays within available budget. And in the, in the case that that is not possible, then the administration would come back to the board. So I think that, Adam, it seems to me that you actually gave us some additional information this time in terms of saying, we have a $500,000 budget. But I've looked at the numbers and identified how much we should spend based on, as Ray explained, the expected time. And so we basically have a $150,000 cushion in that budget line.
Yes.
Estimated, anticipated.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Which is a good thing.
Call for the question.
Yes. So I think we're ready to take the roll call.
Mr. Beederman.
I approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approve.
Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved.
Thank you.
And the chair notes that we have 17 minutes to complete this meeting. And we'll move on to Resolution 86. Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Okay. The next item is Resolution 86 dash 2023. This is Request for Approval to Award a Services Contract for Snow and Ice Removal Services. Snow and Ice contract expired in the summer of this year as designed, when there is very little chance for snow and ice. Contract is necessary to maintaining safe and accessible parking lots and sidewalks for all of our locations. We have an estimated annual cost of $350,000, but can vary widely. We've seen years with half of that. And we've seen years with multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars over that. This is funded through the operating budget. The vendor, Providence Outdoor, is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform 75% of the work. Three subcontractors combined are MBEs and will self-perform a total of 15% of the work. And one subcontractor is a city-certified WBE and will supply goods, specifically salt, worth 10% of the contract amount. We followed the Request for Proposal process as governed by Indiana Code 522. Public notices were sent on 10/17 and 10/24. We sent notices directly to 25 vendors, 19 of whom were XBEs. And we had a pre-proposal conference on October 31st. Two proposals were received. And Providence Outdoor was evaluated by the Evaluation Committee to be the best overall option for NDPL. The vendor has worked for NDPL for several years and is very familiar with our processes, procedures, and properties. And any necessary work will begin immediately. And that's it.
That's it. Okay. It was noted that Resolution 86, Approval of an Award for Services Contract for Snow and Ice Removal was discussed at the Facilities Committee. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
We then discussed that at Facilities Committee because it was, wasn't ready.
Okay.
But Adam assured us that he had the procedure. So we're trusting in him.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call to approve Resolution 86.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne. Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for your report and resolutions.
Thank you.
Well done. Library Foundation update, Mr. Beederman.
Oh, let me get back to that, sorry. So I'm going to, I'm going to save you some time. So the packet has been included in your reports. Lots of good things happened. There was a quarterly meeting this month. We elected some new board members. We passed the budget for 2024. We are proud to support the library with $2.18 million in 2024. So that's awesome. We appreciated a lot of people on Staff and Service Day. Good news about the 2023 staff campaign. They raised $26,018, which is a 20% increase from last year. We talked last month about the new scholarship fund that's being put together. $4,000 of that $26,000 was directed at a scholarship fund, thanks to Dr. Matata for the idea for the fund. So great stuff there. And then we had 201 donors last month, which included Eli Lilly, Live Nation, and McAllister Machinery. And then this month, we gave $13,000 to the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on to the report of the CEO. Mr. Hill.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
Before you is the Resolution 87, 2023, which is the confirmatory resolution related to financial travel and personal matters, which occurs every month. It's in its regular format. And I would just ask that you would approve Resolution 87, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 87, 2023 regarding finances, personnel, and travel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The resolution has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Mr. Lane.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne. Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion carries. We'll move on to CEO report.
All right, thank you. I'll try to go through this, not as quickly as possible, but as thoroughly as I can. Most of this information was also submitted as part of your written report. So I'll just go ahead and go through this next slide. Town Hall. We had our town hall meeting was November the 15th. We had 153 people who attended, participated, logged on for the event. We had 14 questions that were submitted from staff. Our previous town hall in September, we had 22 questions. So we have fewer questions this time. Our town halls are scheduled for 2024 as well. The next one will be in January. And they will be every other month after that at the same time at 9:00 a.m. And then staff will be able to submit questions for that. Our branch staff meetings, ECs, we still meet in the branches. We meet in the branches twice a month. One of the questions that came up in the town hall was about the availability of the EC members after. Sometimes our meetings may run a little long. But we did encourage people, the branch manager and the circulation supervisor come into our meeting, and they give an update on the branches. They can also submit questions from their staff or staff can come in and ask questions as well. We'll try to make ourselves more available. Sometimes our meetings run a little long. So we want to just make sure we give staff a chance to come in and talk to us and ask us any questions that they may have. EC liaison is probably, it's one of our most popular things that we've done so far. Staff really like it. Again, we have members that are assigned to every branch and locations. We go out, and we just had our quarterly summary meeting that covered the third quarter. The most common theme that we had was still feedback on safety of staff and safety of our patrons. So we're really working really hard to, to make sure that we can correct for that. Also, again, just making sure that we are available to our staff at these liaison visits. And these are scheduled with the branch manager and the liaison. Another thing that I mentioned to staff as part of the town hall was that if a staff member wanted to set up a one-on-one appointment with an executive committee member, they can do that as well. We just want to make sure that we avail ourselves to them for any questions that they may have. And then on system-wide communications, we've been doing a really great job of communications of getting the newsletter out on time. So we appreciate that. Next slide. Our DAF feature program was Celebrate Freedom to Read with John Green. The event, Senator Round, experienced. Uh, the event centered around experience, John's experience with censorship of his bestselling books, Looking for Alaska and Fault in Our Stars. We had over 275 guests, uh, more than 800 guests signed up for our waitlist. And then we had 60 patrons who participated in the banned book challenge, uh, which kicked off this event. And the event was moderated by Indiana State Senator Andrea Huntley. Next slide. In October, I wanted to highlight another program here really quickly. We kicked off the Digital Inclusion Week, which I believe was October the 2nd through the 6th. We started off with North Star Digital Literacy at five locations as the pilot program, and those have finally rolled out to all the branches, except Nora and Pike, just due to their renovation. And then here's just a few numbers that we had with the new platform. The platform saw 72 unique users in October, completed 82 hours of independent learning through the online learning modules. Uh, patrons completed 142 total skills assessments. And then the most popular assessment topic, uh, the month of October was basic computer skills and PowerPoint. Next slide. Okay, the next, okay, CBLC's sixth anniversary was October the 14th, and I want to give a special thanks to Brianna Barnes, um, for making sure that this went off without a hitch. Uh, thank you so much for all the work, Brianna, that you put into this program. Uh, we had performances by Jamie Johnson, a spoken word performance from CBLC poet, Lord January York. There was a panel discussion on women's culture as it pertains to health and wellness, entrepreneurship, and community. And this was moderated by WNBA and NBA MC Olivia West. Uh, DJ Duke also provided entertainment. We also had a kids' corner, uh, which provided face painting and canvas painting. Next slide. Uh, juvenile program nationally acclaimed author Jean-Luang Yang was here to visit. Um, he made a visit to Harrison Hill Elementary School. And thank you to Chief Public Service Officer John Helling. He went to Harrison Hill as well, did an introduction. So that was great. Uh, Mr. Yang visited Harrison Hill, and he interacted with fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. Uh, we had 114 guests who joined us for the conversation, and it was very well received by our patrons. Next slide. Uh, staff and leadership team training. We had crisis communications and mental health 101 training that was held at the October Systems Managers Meeting. Uh, the training was facilitated by Kimbo Richardson from Community Health Network. We also plan to have this training for our circulation supervisors in the near future. Uh, the training consisted of group discussions, a lot of, uh, some, some little bit of role play, and just being able to communicate, uh, some good best practices with dealing with patrons. We had a couple of staff who attended the Urban Libraries Council. Most of the EC leadership team, we attended Diversity Roundtable Annual Conference at Martin University. Uh, one of the sessions centered on psychological safety, which we all attended as part of that training. And it was very, very good training, and we plan on having that training for the, uh, Executive Committee Leadership Team as well in January. Uh, the leadership team also took the DISA assessment. The DISA said we had a follow-up training on the different styles of, uh, leadership of our EC members. Um, we learned how to respond to challenges and how to work together as a team. And we thought that training was very good for our team. So thank you for everyone who participated. Uh, next slide. Donors and communities. Um, I gave a presentation in October to the Giving Committee. Uh, it's the, the overall goal of this committee is to keep them informed of the library's progress and how the Library Foundation supports the library. So if they have donors who express interest in the cause, they can confidently recommend the Library Foundation as an option. Um, there was a Meet the CEO event that was at the CBLC. We had about 30 donors in attendance. Uh, some folks in attendance include Lorenzo Esther, President of the Indianapolis Foundation, uh, Jamie Valentine, Community Impact Officer of the Indianapolis Foundation, David Hillman, Senior Program Officer for the Nina Mason Pullman Charitable Trust, Sheila Corey, uh, representing Everwise, and Brent Burdick, representing, uh, PNC. I want to say thank you to Roberta Jaggers and the Library Foundation staff for coordinating this event. It was a really great event. Got a chance to meet a lot of our donors. Uh, City County Council, Lolita and I, we met with, uh, Counselor Brown and Michael Solari to come up with a plan to work on, uh, local income tax for the library, and those meetings will be ongoing in the near future. Uh, the Lilian Childress, Lilian Hall Childress, as you received in your email from Roberta, we raised about $38,400. Uh, thank you for Mr. Stephen Lane for also joining us on the committee. The advisory committee completed its work. Uh, many thanks to Mr. Stephen Lane for participating. Uh, thank you to Teacher Galarse. She will convene a selection committee to invite the first round of applications. Uh, we anticipate the first award will be made next spring. Next slide. So we had a really great staff day. Uh, thank you to Deputy Mayor Judith Thomas. She came in and she proclaimed November 6, 2023, 2023, as the Indianapolis Public Library Day. So thank you to Deputy Mary Judith Thomas. Um, we did have quite a few, quite a few sessions for staff day. Uh, I have listed the top five sessions, uh, from a survey that we received. Not in any particular order, except the very first one, ASL. That was our top, uh, session that people thought that they really enjoyed. Uh, our keynote speaker was Rafael Sanchez. He's an Executive Vice President and Chief Impact Officer and Indianapolis Market President at Old National Bank. I want to thank Dr. Payne, Dr. Palacio, Dr. Matata, and Mr. Stephen Lane for attending staff day. Thank you so much. And that's all I have. Any questions for me before we move on?
Just a little bit, um, is that all right? Just a quick question. The Urban Libraries Council, staff and leadership, um, if you have a chance, can you just give a synopsis? Not at this meeting, because we've already gone long enough. But, uh, because we are an urban-serving library, it'd be great to get some feedback about what that council is doing and how it affects us.
Yes, ma'am, will do. Uh, yes, John Helling and another staff member attended Urban that conference. I asked for the information a little late, so I didn't get to get it in my packet, but I can send you that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, next will be Strategic Planning and Assessment Officer, Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie.
May I, um, I want to check in with the board. Everyone has expressed a desire to keep our meetings to two hours. And this report that Ms. McKenzie has done is extensive, and I think, um, and I think that it bears our full attention. Um, so what I would like to check in with the board about is if you want to hear this or if we move this to our next meeting, right after bran- after the branch managers' report, so that we can give, um, our best attention to, uh, some really good information and the work that you have done. Are board members in agreement with that? Or?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. Um, thank you for your flexibility on that. But I do, I do think it's important that we hear this and that we're all in the right frame of mind. And 8:30 is a, uh, is like a, there's a switch that happens, so we're trying to be mindful of that. Um.
All right, with that being said, that will, that concludes the CEO's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. All right. Uh, very quickly, discussion and agenda building. Um, this is, time is made available to discuss items that are of interest to the library or board members and to give the opportunity to suggest topics for, for, uh, the next meeting agenda. Are there any suggestions from our board members? We already heard, um, from Dr. Matata about the Urban Library, uh, conference. Are there any other suggestions for the agenda?
I think it's always good to, uh, get an update on what we're doing with the work for the climate improvement process. I think coming back and revisiting that, uh, since it's such an important initiative for the library would be valuable.
Yeah, I think that was on the.
Yes, that will be on the December, yes.
Yes, for next month. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. The, uh, next, uh, regular meeting of the board is scheduled for Monday, December 18th, at the Franklin Road Branch Library, 5550 South Franklin Road, at 6:30 PM. If there is no other business to be discussed, the chair would, uh, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is a second?
Second.
This meeting is, is adjourned at 8:32.